When the crux, the contractor notified the railroad, Mark, he said you can't cross there. It's not a designated crossing. That stirred the reason for this conversation was, okay, well, we have to cross at a designated crossing, which is the South Industrial Way, which is where they are crossing for, to get into bore hole two, and where we would cross for bore hole one. So the intention of the road use agreement they had before you is to allow the project and us and the contractors in the next 10 days that we have, 70 days, to cross it South Industrial Way, the westernmost tracks, which is ones not in use, prior to hitting the Highline Track, the contractor would take a left and head north on that road that parallels the Highline Trail, that goes in and out of city property and onto BLM property. So our, so we were not aware, and I think anybody that, we needed additional approvals by the city or the railroad. So I don't know if that was on our side of mistake, or if it was part of the BLM, or just a gross misunderstanding, but we went through the process with BLM. We will not cross the Highline Track anywhere. And there is definitely in the EA and all the documents, a very amount of information on what is the actual width of the railroad easement, or the city easement and the fee title on that section. We've seen everywhere from 50 feet, 100 feet full, you know, from 50 feet from center line, 100 foot width to 200 feet. We've been trying to uncover that. We've got emails that say 60 feet from center line. Our bore hole will be outside of the city property and the railroad property. It would be on BLM property. And we will make sure to stay well outside of that 100 foot, because I think as of the last hour, it's being uncovered that the section between Ely and the Gill is actually 200 feet total width, or 100 foot to the center line. And I, and we just went to the city reporters to pull that as well. So, so we would stay outside of the city and railroad, by the way, to do the geotech work. The reason for the short timeframe is we, you know, we started this process months ago, a long time ago, to do the environmental, to do the studies on the road, on the areas, the amount of impact that we're having on the land on BLM property is about .75 an acre for the three different site locations with the pads and stuff. We are in sage grouse habitat area. So we pulled some of the bore holes that were in critical sage house out of that sage grouse habitat area. We then continued forward and we bought credits from the SET for sage grouse mitigation. We bought net nine credits. We got the decision on October 4th. On October 1st, the SET met and denied a waiver to go into winter sage grouse habitat time period, which starts November 1st. And this whole step toe side is in say, winter sage grouse habitat area. And what we had asked for on the waiver with the SET and Endo was that we could drive the cars on the existing dirt road, and they denied that. So we're compressed in the time that we, all the work that we do has to be completed by October 31st, hence the 24-hour shift up on the mountain, and this would be a 12-hour day shift. So I, hopefully I explained. And the, and the bond, we do have a bond in place with BLM. It's about $32,000. There's an obligation to maintain the roads and to leave them as good a condition or better than we started. Red Brothers, Red Brothers are the subcontractors that are doing that work, I believe, to maintain that road. So for the purpose of the city and the railroad and the western road that we're talking about here, we would leave it in better condition. And the amount of work that we're talking about is, is over the, you know, until the 31st of the month. One of the conditions with the sage grouse ecosystem was how many trips a day are you taking, what is that vehicle traffic? For the project up on the mountain, which is running 24 hours a day, it's about 20 trips a day of vehicle traffic, and that includes water trucks and people movers, you know, so they're caravanning out there when they do shift change, they're doing seven to seven. So there's not a lot of vehicle traffic, but they do need to get water out to the truck. We do have a road use agreement in place with the county. So there's, you know, we have an obligation that's contracted to maintain the county portion of the road to go from the South Industrial, where it's paid and it ends, to where we return off or where the county road ends, I think, which is probably at the Western Rail, crossing the, because I think that's where it enters. Yes, sir?
I'm going to be very honest. I just got a whole lot of information in a little bit of time. I also hear some doubts and still some questions in your voice about some information that you need to do with the project. So I'll be honest with you, I know less now than I knew when I made my comment the first time. And it just seems like that's an awful lot, and we should have had an opportunity a while ago to talk about this, digest it, hear from citizens, and make sure that we understand everything that you're asking. And I just feel like there's still some loose ends.
Well, it is, you know, what we're doing right now is one of the phases, and I think one of the comments earlier was we keep getting different information. It's because we're, you know, as the project is, originally it comes with, from an idea that's on a whiteboard, and you look at different things, and we're doing the efforts to narrow the scope of the project and to understand it better. And we don't know everything at day one for a project that takes five years to develop. And so we come out with a broad shotgun approach and then narrow it down. And we're in that narrowing process, which the work that we're trying to do right now with the geotech exploration, which is a four inch bore hole that they're drilling, is determining what the rock looks like underground. Because as a council member mentioned, there will be an upper, you know, if the project moves forward, there would be an upper reservoir of water, a lower reservoir, and a vertical shaft, and everything is underground. So the really, the characteristics of the ground is one of the most important factors in that aspect of the project.
During that commission meeting, I sat there, and it was mentioned, you know, the bore hole three up on the mountain, because of the weather, you're not going to get to it. So you're going to come back next year, just to maybe save all this, why can't you do this, do more due diligence on the bore hole one, and do it next year, come back next year, do it the same time you're here, on, do it number three?
Well, we have the equipment here. We didn't realize that we really didn't have to go through this process, so they mobilized two drill rigs to be able to get this done in the short period of time between the sage grouse ecosystem. You know, from a, from a seasonal perspective, with sage grouse and Endo, right now, there's a 45-day annual window to access these three sites. And so we would have from September 15th to October 31st next year. The big reason, the big, bore hole number one is actually one of the most important sites, because there is a fault line that goes north, south through that region, where that is, like right, you know, a little bit west of the tracks. And so that's what we, they really need to see what is under the fault, which will then help them to understand the engineering aspect of it.
So what's going to be right there at that bore hole, that lower reservoir, or the current location, or what?
The, well, where the bore hole is, is just trying to get to the fault line to understand again what that, what it looks like down there under the ground. The reservoir, you know, this was a misstep that the project made, and one of the engineers had, originally the lower reservoir was going to be between the two rails, and I think you guys are all very aware, that then the engineers came and said that the lower reservoir, because of the soil content, and I forget what it's called there, needed to move uphill a little bit, and because of the material content, and as a result, you know, moving it was, it required the rail to move, which we had conversations about, keep maintaining fee title. That was, again, a misstep, because it created agitation. But currently, the lower reservoir would be well down, well enough down slope from the Highline Rail and in between the two rails, so it would not be in the city right of way or the railroad.
If I could just, if I could just clarify, then, the councilman's question is, these bore holes that you're doing now don't really have anything to do with the final project infrastructure, they're just geological test bore holes, is that right?
That's correct. I mean, they, the bore hole location would be some, you know, the, the lower reservoir would be in proximity, but I can't say that it would be right where that is.
You know, you mentioned the EA, I read that EA, quite boring, actually, but you go through there and you read that, I find that EA was way underprepared. You know, you read that, then you go out and you talk to some people, for example, abstaining on this bore hole thing, what are you going to prove and let no crossing land? I didn't say nothing. You know, there's a lot of hearsay, and again, you know, like you mentioned, maybe the problem with BLM, why they didn't notify the city? Why wasn't the city in the road involved in this here? Some of the wall was dropped, and here it is, right here in the middle of this room, what are we going to do? I just, once again, we, I understand the feasibility 100%, but I don't like it, it's something way too much before the move.
I'd really like to clarify here a little bit. I mean, we do have two members of our council who sit on the railroad board, we have some railroad executive director and another member here. I understand that R+ Energy's went to the railroad at least a few months ago to talk about this very issue. So the fact that you guys didn't know that this was partly on railroad and city right of way doesn't, doesn't seem accurate to me.
Well, we know that the city has fee title to the land that the railroad sits on. We were trying to see if we could just stay within that railroad corridor to do this geotech work, absent doing a full PA and going through the BLM.
Well, I understand that, but that information, together with why this wasn't brought up months ago when that was the issue?
Well, again, I didn't know, and I don't think any of our consultants or any of our parties, that the road was controlled by the city or the railroad, this dirt road, that that's part of the, and, and I guess to that point, that the railroad was, knew that this was happening, and the public did. I mean, we have been out there, we do have a couple of letters from, from Mark saying, you know, we're not going to prove anything until you have your permits in place. And so we now have the BLM, you know, EA or the decision record to do this, this portion of the, the work.
But then to councilman Alworth's question about the EA, if, I mean, it shows on the EA, as I understand it, that tried to contact it, you know, and other people were contacted, but the property owner that this is adjacent to, we were never sent this EA. We had to get it from a citizen who happened to have a copy.
We don't control that process, Mike.
And I've tried to call BLM, and nobody returns my calls, which is entirely frustrating and speaks to the issue that I brought up initially, that if the process isn't working at this juncture, the city as an entity has an issue and concern that it's not working for the rest of the process either, which allows us as a city entity to protect the concerns of our citizens and infrastructure and, and natural resources, to the extent that we have control over that or anything else. Is there anything you can say to that?
I can say that we can try to take a more active position in working, you know, some of this is not our, we, we can't control some of those, the notifications, but I think we can absolutely take a better position in coming before the, the city council and the different boards on a regular basis and giving you guys updates, status updates. We have been doing it with the city, or the...
Well, I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the updates. I know you guys have public meetings about this, and we've all attended at least one or two of them. My concern, and I think the concern of the city, is that there, there's processes here. We get EA's for the mines, which have nothing to do with the property, but it gets mailed, we get it sent out, we have a chance to respond. And, and here, that, that, that process just appears to have not worked, and we lost our ability to respond here. And now we're having a special meeting, trying to address your concern and the council's concerns in a time to get something done. And it's a bad position for all of us.
Yeah, I, I don't think I'm in a position to respond to that. I acknowledge it, I, it's...
Whose ultimate responsibility is the EA?
I believe that's going to happen.
That's my responsibility.
Okay. Can you respond to that question?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
A little louder.
A little louder, we can't hear you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I'm Greg Mulley. I, I don't know if the protocol is over, but I'm sorry, I have to write for it, I have to prove it.
Gracia, we're having trouble hearing you, but if you can resolve that, we have another public comment later, we have someone from the BLM who's going to speak at the moment, though. Please.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'll wait.
If you can state your name for the record.
Yeah, so Jared Ryder, I'm the municipal manager, your lead manager in the district. I guess, first I'd like to start out by just saying, if you've been trying to reach someone with BLM, I'd like to know who you've been trying to contact, if it's a member of my staff, I would correct that. No one has reached out to me from the city.
I've left voicemails with Leslie Ryder.
Okay, so Leslie is assistant for the end there.
Okay.
I will follow up, thank you for that. So yes, I will say that there was an oversight with sending the EA to the city, that is correct. I would also like to bring to the attention that what BLM has indicated for that upper rail line, also known as the adverse, is that that is not covered under disconvenience. The legal descriptions of the congressional conveyance do not reach over to that to adverse, to follow the lower line that goes all the way up into the county. There is a under authorization that we have, that's a right-of-way grant, it is separate. That right-of-way grant issued in 1987, it's here, a foot mud, a foot mud grant. And so that road goes along the upper adverse, it goes in and out of that right-of-way, and so our records do not indicate that that road is owned by the city. And so I think that that is something that needs to be looked at. We have made a request to our records repository, which is in Denver, in order to pull the original records on that right-of-way, to ensure the accuracy of our records here at this office. So that route that does go along the upper adverse, it does go in and out of that right-of-way. However, based upon what we have, that is open public access, as long as somebody's not on the track or the bed itself, because the tracks and the bed itself is not public property, not BLM property, it is city's property, it is the railroad's property. And so that is how that came to be. Now, we did have some verbal conversations with the railroad about R+ and some of their requests for going over tracks, and we did put that on the component, that we need to get that permission in order to go over any tracks you want to go over, and, which they have had those conversations, as far as we know, and they were told, no, you can't cross there because it's not a public crossing. So that is where BLM's perspective on this is at, and that's how it came to be with that road and that line right there.
Okay.
I can only apologize for the oversight. It's not how we normally do business. It has put the city in that situation. It is extremely embarrassing, but I will tell you that that is the records that we have on hand, and why, even though the city should have been contacted and part of the process, and it was an expedited process, but at the same time, the agency doing its diligence, based upon what our records indicate is that that road is an open public road because it's a right-of-way and not the congressional conveyance.
Mark, is that the railroad's understanding as well, or is there, is there a discrepancy here that we have to resolve in addition to the original?
Yeah. There is a discrepancy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There is a discrepancy, and I found this out like 20 minutes before this meeting started, so.
What you said, there is or there isn't?
There is a discrepancy.
The railroad probably used the...
Yeah, it was part of the, yeah, it was part of the, it was in conveyance.
And BLM doesn't have those records.
Correct.
Can I speak as a volunteer to answer some of the questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. Steve, it's Chris Stanko, Attorney General, for the railroad.
Who, who is this? Hello? Please state your name for the record.
Gabe Zobel, the law firm Dorsey Whitney, I represent R+ Power.
Mayor, it's Chris Stanko, Attorney for Railroad Foundation.
Go ahead, Chris. Chris? We heard you, but then we lost you. We've got someone at the podium who'll pick you up again later. Thank you.
I just wanted to speak a little bit, I think as we were discussing through, I can address at least part of the process, and I can address the EA. I was out of private practice for six months, and I just recently rehanded private practice courtesy, so I don't know the EA that went through here, but I do know that in the future, you brought up a concern if the city would be corresponded with, and be brought in any future EA's. FERC is the lead agency on those EA's, as they go forward with any form of permitting, and BLM joining on as a corresponding agency, as are other groups, and you'll definitely include them in the processes. We'll review it, we'll make sure that you're given all the notices that are forward. As you brought up, councilman Alworth, this is just a feasibility study, so we initially were getting that permission from BLM, we just assumed it was recorded, and I apologize, it wasn't. I know as we're talking, it seems like there's an issue, so I think, Councilwoman Harper, you were discussing, you didn't quite understand what we were asked. I think one of the reasons initially...
Recording in progress.
That the railroad was contacted was because it's up at the top, upper part of this map here, and this was the crux that they wanted to use to be able to access bore hole one. And as the road said, it's not a designated crossing, we don't want to give you permission for that. Understandable. So our understanding was then, the designated crossing to far south is, we'd use the county road to access, and then we would come up, and we call it the Highline Track, but we would use that access road. Our understanding is similar to BLM's, that that is on BLM property alone, it was not part of the grant that was granted through Congress, so therefore there's no fee simple title, was what our understanding was. It was at the last minute that we found out, no, there might be a discrepancy. And so instead of trying to argue over that discrepancy on who owns the fee simple title, we thought the better process would be simply get a license agreement in place, the city can have money, you'll be given a daily fee, we only have seven days that we can access this and perform this feasibility, and then we would get off it. Instead of trying to argue over the discrepancy of who owns the land, who doesn't own the land, was there a problem with the congressional grant, or was there not? And so that was our own misunderstanding. I think the BLM's, and it seems now the railroads as well, who actually owns this access road that traverses up your northern line track. That was why you were contacted last minute. It was an oversettin' of part, but really it was just a discrepancy of county records, as I was pulling the same records that you had by me pull from your county records, and it did look like, at least according to the county, that you guys own that fee simple title, and I'll review that further along the way. But that was some of the issues that were going on, and I wanted to make that very clear, that, that was why they were initially contacted the railroad, was to get access across here. We needed to have that. It's not a designated crossing. Mark Bassett told us, no, that's okay. The reason that you're getting this last minute was, we thought we'd be able to just access BLM property through that access road, and it's only recently we've learned there might be a discrepancy that you own that.
And I, and I understand all of that, but I essentially feel like you're asking us to shore up for your shortness and misinformation, and I don't think that that's fair to us, I don't think that that's fair to us, fair to our constituents. And when we have people around the room who are saying, well, I'm not sure, I don't know, or no, I know for a fact that that's not right, I don't think you can expect us to essentially come to your rescue to fix something that you did not do well with the...
Councilman Alworth, I think that's very fair, but I was going to say also, we don't even know if you own the road.
So...
And you have like, you know, if you own the road even.
So exactly, so nobody should make a decision on something they don't know or don't understand.
Well, except that BLM does own all the property out there, and this is a right-of-way through, and the permit that we got to access is on BLM property.
Recording in progress.
And the reason why we're here before you today, and the reason why we haven't gone out there, because from the perspective of our access and easement in direction of the BLM, we don't need to have it, and we could have mobilized, but we want to be good neighbors in, in the community and not be assumed to be presumptuous on that. And that's part of the reason to work with Mr. Bet, you know, the railroad, and with the city council, we want to do well here. And I think that there's a lot of question about, does the railroad or the city have, have the right to deny us access to this? And it's something that's going to be a longer legal issue for the railroad and for the city, if it is just, in fact, a right-of-way. We do, you know, we are spending money with people standing by to, to be able to do this work, and I recognize that, again, we want to be good neighbors, so.
Well, all I can say is, as a pastor, owning a railroad property for a dirt road to go in and out of your property, while it's on your property, you own that road. That's safe, by the state law.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, Mark Bassett for the record. Just before this meeting, we spoke with our Surface Transportation Board Council. Surface Transportation Board in Washington DC governs all railroads, and we have Surface, Surface Transportation Board authority to operate on that track. And when this question became ownership, we asked him, well, we do have a right-of-way from 1907 to use that track, and our records show our right-of-way is 100 feet on either side of that track. And so does that mean we control the entire right-of-way? And so our STV council said, yes, it does, even though it was granted from the federal government, and it may not be fee simple, we're, again, we're not sure of that, but regardless of its fee simple, we definitively have the right-of-way, and it was granted in 1907. So.
What would it take to grant access for them to just cross that unpermitted crossing rather than go down this road, is that not...
That's not doable. It, it's, yeah, railroad crossings are controlled by the Federal Railroad Administration and also the Surface Transportation Board. And, and that's another point that I would like to bring up, too. R+ Energy approached the foundation back in March, and the foundation had a meeting on April 1st, and, and basically the foundation, and I wrote a letter to R+ Energy, I think it stayed April 4th, and we thought the request to use the road, to use part of the railroad right-of-way was premature until they had their permits. And so we said, once you get your permits, please come back to us. Well, the very first time I heard from R+ Energy on this particular issue was, I'm going to say October 7th. So, yeah, they did approach us in March, we responded to their letter, with a letter that was either April 4th or 5th, saying, you know, if you're going to use this, please let us know. And Chris Stanko would like to speak, if, if he can get on.
He can get on. Mr. Stanko, are you, are you available yet?
Mayor, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Thanks, I had to call, I had to call in the Zoom, the Zoom connection from here and you know, what's it worth. But Chris Stanko for the record, and also for the record, while as a matter of public record, I am counsel for the city's Ely, in a different matter, I, I am solely speaking at this moment as counsel for the foundation, and the Congress waived it, allowing me to do so by the city. Couple things, Mayor and council. First, I was just recently, I've heard about the road issue a little bit sometime, we just recently made aware of a potential agreement, what the situation was, by our preliminary work, it does look like this is BLM, some of the BLM is correct with respect to it not being part of the area, banned in 2005 from the federal government.
Chris, if you could speak as close to your mic as possible, that would help.
Yeah, hold on. Better?
Better.
Yeah. And so, but there's still, there's still clearly a right-of-way there, that right-of-way. I, again, I haven't asked him to do the full diligence, look at all of the progress for documents, giving rides to the tracks, but consultation with several railroad council, even though we, you know, we don't have a fee interest, we have the right-of-way, I struggle to see the differentiation between being up on the bed of the track, other than you be violating federal railroad law up there, from a property perspective, being up on the bed of the track, or being right next to the track, and, and jaded service road that is still within the right-of-way. And so, in my mind, though, I, I do think that while, I, I believe my client has to approve that this could be solved by a short-term license agreement, I know there's a mention of an easement agreement, I don't think that's appropriate or proper, but a short-term license agreement where the R+ would be bound to restore the road to the conditions now, indemnify the city and the foundation for coming within the right-of-way and using, you know, significant, conducting significant commercial operations within the right-of-way, and all that entails could be a, potentially a proper solution to this. And so I'd have to know more, but I wouldn't concede to the... And so I'd have to know more, but I wouldn't concede to the BLM gentleman's point, legal conclusion, that neither the city nor the foundation as holders of the right-of-way have no right whatsoever to control what kind of operations are conducted within that right-of-way. And there's also this question too, if the path to the track is an operation subject to FRA regulations, subject to SDB authority, it's been within interstate rail system. But the problem could potentially be resolved via carefully crafted license, short-term license agreement, 40, 10 days, if all parties are met with.
Okay. So if I'm understanding correctly, at the very least, the railroad has a right-of-way.